Welcome to the Monday, October 19th, 2020 virtual session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Honorable Mayor Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Yeah.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Following statement in accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule any person's city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this October 19th, 2020 city council meeting will be held remotely. The first item on the agenda is reports of city officers, comments by the mayor. I have two, two things to comment on. Number one, a comment on our current situation with respect to the COVID-19 pandemic and case counts and so forth. Unfortunately, the rumors that many have been hearing are true. We are on the very edge of a more intrusive lockdown being ordered by the state and by the county. The numbers are going in the wrong direction. While still below 3% positivity in Lake Forest, our numbers have been increasing much more rapidly over the past two weeks than they were for the past several months. And other Lake County communities are faring far worse. Unfortunately, we cannot really expect our schools, restaurants, and other facilities to be allowed to stay open if residents continue to do things like hosting large social events for themselves and their children, which has become a serious problem. There are also questions about, you know, teen sports and other, other, other activities that seem to be accelerating the spread. So, but you know, I really would ask that people refrain from having large gatherings either with their own friends or with their children or among their children. And that we all need to take this more seriously than we have been. We had a pretty good run through the summer, but unfortunately it's coming back to bite us. And I think it's not going to be business as usual here, unfortunately, if present trends continue. So, hopefully we can get control of this quickly before the winter really sets in and we can expect that if things are tightened down, that we can loosen them up a bit. But as we all have come to know, this is not, this is nothing to trifle with and we don't control this as a city. These are, these are things, these are decisions that are made Springfield and in Waukegan. So please, everybody, redouble your efforts to comply, wear masks, keep distance, avoid large gatherings, and hopefully we can have a more pleasant winter. Second, the library board staff and their consultants are going to be providing the council and the community with an introduction to the proposed library capital improvement projects. There are no action required this evening from us, but, but we're going to hear a vision, a vision and a concept for the future of the library. And I have a few comments to make in anticipation of that. And then, then I'll turn it over to the team from the library to go through where they are and kind of what the, what the future may hold. Tonight, the council and Lake Forest as a community will begin a discussion about the future of our library. Like all of our institutions, the library must evolve to continue to be relevant to our children, teens, seniors, and everyone in between. And to make those who are longtime library, and to those who are longtime library patrons, as well as those who are looking to make Lake Forest their home. The library is one of Lake Forest's many treasures. Whether or not we as individuals are currently active users of the library services and programs, the library plays an important role in making our community a special place. Current data confirms that the library is heavily used by many in our community. The Lake Forest Library has never been just about books. It has always been about people and community, and that holds true today. Today, it is especially relevant to our two fast-growing resident groups, children and seniors. It is an important institution for attracting new residents and for retaining our current residents. The library team, including the library board, staff and their consultants have been hard at work conceiving a plan that will position the library for the future. As a tradition, as is a tradition in Lake Forest, the library team is striving to develop a plan that respects, protects, and honors the legacy of our library's past, while at the same time looking forward to assure that the library continues to meet the changing needs and desires of the community with excellence. I know I speak for many in the community who recognize that the library needs our attention, just like all of our historic buildings do from time to time. As far as I know, the last time the community invested significantly in the library was half a century ago, when the two contemporary wings were added. Since that time, we have added Gorton, Dickinson Hall, Croya, Ragdale, and Elloa Farm to our list of treasured local institutions. All of these institutions have thrived together with the library through close cooperation and coordination of programming. There's no reason why that cannot continue. We all have seen the dome, which is currently wrapped due to deterioration that is occurring. To their credit, the library team has taken the time back and look at the needs of the library holistically, much as the city is currently doing as we assess the physical needs of each of our own facilities. The library team is with us tonight to introduce their findings and recommendations for discussion and input, and to give us insight into the study, due diligence, and outreach that has occurred to date. There are not detailed answers yet on exactly what the scope of the library project will be, what it will look like, how it will progress, or what it will cost. I do not expect to get those answers tonight. This is an opportunity to begin that discussion among the broader Lake Forest community and offer input on the vision and concepts that the library team has developed to date. Any physical improvements must be driven by the library's programming needs. In the future, once there is agreement around the scope of the library project and the anticipated price tag, I anticipate that the council will receive a detailed financial plan and a request for city participation and support in some form. We are not prepared to have that discussion tonight. What we do know is that like so many initiatives in our community, this project cannot move forward without widespread support. I expect this to become another in the long line of successful public private partnerships that have shaped Lake Forest throughout its history. As the council knows, there are many capital projects that will require financial resources in the coming years. Over the course of the next few months, the council will work to establish priorities as we balance many competing demands for our limited financial resources. We will be considering timing and financing options across the breadth of our capital requirements with a commitment to continuing Lake Forest's proud history of fiscal prudence. Our goal for tonight should be to listen carefully to the presentation. After the presentation is completed, I encourage the council to ask questions and request additional information on any aspect of the presentation they wish. Although we may not get all of our questions answered tonight, I am confident that tonight's presentation will go a long way for bringing us all up to date. More answers will come later. After this meeting, I'll be directing the city staff to continue working with the library team and to keep the council informed as the process takes shape. Thank you for indulging me. And with that, I would like to introduce Katherine Lemer, Director of Lake Forest Library.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. We're bringing up our PowerPoint right now. And Wendy Darling, our president of the library board, will start the presentation in just a minute. Is our PowerPoint up? Can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Wendy, do you want to start?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. On behalf of the library board and staff, I want to thank you for this opportunity to update you on the library capital improvement project with three short presentations. First, Katherine Lemer, library director, will present on the project and its objectives. Second, Victor Pichati of HGA, the library's architects, will present the architectural aspects of the project. And last, Russ Hodge of the Hodge Group will provide information on his firm's work regarding the financial support for the project. Before I turn it over to Katherine Lemer, I would like to express the appreciation of the library board and staff for the invaluable advice and guidance provided by Jason Wicka, city manager, Kathy Serniak, community development director, Elizabeth Halib, city finance director, and many other city staff throughout the last four years. Katherine?
Thanks, Wendy. So, good evening, Mayor and members of city council. And Mayor, thank you very much for those thoughtful introductory remarks. The work over the last four years on the capital improvement project has engaged many members of the Lake Forest community and been directed by the library's mission and community's four cornerstones of family, education, tradition, and philanthropy. In keeping with the board's role as stewards of the public's trust, the work has also been guided by the broad tenants of the Lake Forest community strategic plan, fiscal stewardship, business and economic vitality, environmental sustainability, and community character. In the tradition of fully studying and exploring a capital project, the library board has been at work on this project for a number of years. The project began in 2016 with the adoption of a new operational strategy for the library. With the adoption of this new service strategy, the library became more open and welcoming. The library loosened lending and use rules, added collections and tech resources, and increased invitations to come to the building by offering additional programming courses and opportunities for community gatherings. A year later, the board was interested in learning the community's opinion of this new strategy. In 2017, we completed a community needs assessment, which included an adult survey, a separate teen survey, and community focus groups. We were pleased to learn that over 95% of adults and 82% of teens agreed or strongly agreed that the library is relevant to the Lake Forest community. Based on this community input, the library board adopted a new strategic plan. The library staff was encountering inefficiencies with implementing the new operating strategy in the current building. At the same time, significant building issues began to emerge. The initial, the initial estimates through power the historic dome and restore its masonry substructure were of such magnitude that the library board determined the most fiscally responsible course of action was to obtain a feasibility study to assess and document all the aging and deteriorating systems and infrastructure. The goal was to be proactive, to identify and prioritize the building's needs, and to develop a holistic improvement plan that would resolve the infrastructure issues once and for all. The library issued an RFQ for architectural services to assess the building and to marry these two lines of inquiry. The communities expressed desires for 21st century services, programs, and resources on the repower and restoration of the 1931 building. In September of 2018, HGA completed its work. The feasibility report assessed the current state of the building and suggested a range of possibilities for the library to explore to deliver library services. In late 2019, early 2020, the Hodge Group completed a feasibility study of the philanthropic and public interest in funding the improvement project. With this information, HGA resumed, excuse me, resumed work with the library board in a program and pre-design study phase. After a rigorous study of library operations, an interior space design plan based on functions and needs was completed. The board and staff have explored a number of exterior design options that meet the library's functional needs as well. What is a 21st century library? Expectations of public libraries are evolving. Libraries are no longer buildings full of books. In short, a 21st century library provides access to outstanding resources, inclusive programs, and concierge level service, all with the goal of building and enhancing community. The hallmark of a 21st century library building is a facility that can flex and change as the community's needs change. Although I think he would have greatly approved of the activity featured in this program, in this photograph in his library, it is most unlikely that Edwin Clark envisioned young women working collaboratively on computer programming in his library. Similarly, Lake Forest has an opportunity once again to deliver a library able to serve many future generations. The capital improvement project proposes the restoration and expansion of the original Edwin H. Clark Building to deliver 21st century library as desired by the Lake Forest community. We have a unique opportunity to deliver a library for all generations, both those that desire to see the original 1931 facility spaces restored to their former grandeur and planned uses, and those that seek a library that delivers the 21st century amenities provided by libraries and neighboring, neighboring peer communities. The 1931 building is first and foremost a library. Built as a library and gifted to the city of Lake Forest in honor of Kersey Coats Reed, it is prized as an architectural jewel built in the grand classical style of the time. The building has served the Lake Forest community for nearly 90 years and now faces many functional and infrastructure challenges. Library use has dramatically changed since 1931, requiring new services and resources to be incorporated and supported in ways that diminish the functionality and grandeur of the original spaces. For example, the addition of the 1978 west wing transferred the quiet reading room into a passageway to collections housed in the new wing. The stately foyer, foyer became less welcoming as it transformed from a conversational seating area and became cluttered with the business associated with modern libraries, those copiers, security gates, and potential self-check options. One restoration possibility under consideration is the removal of the east and west wings. While it results in a reduction of square footage that will need to be delivered in a new expansion, the removal restores the spaces to their original and still needed functions. A newly refurbished reading room could serve as a space for quiet reflection and even a forum for select special events such as author talks or after-hours literary receptions. The square footage provided in the original building is critical to current and future library operations. And any and all improvement operation, options under consideration do not include abandoning these spaces for new or imagining them as a mausoleum. Rather, envisioning possibilities that respond to the calls for historic preservation, ADA compliance, and flexible functionality that breathe new life and vigor into these spaces are the priority of the library board. I'd like to take you back to that 2016 community survey. The survey identified a number of services desired by Lake Forest residents. These include, among other things, study rooms, spaces for tutors to engage with students, midsize, mid-sized program rooms, a dedicated teen space, self-check, and other technology, and maker space options. It is simply not possible to deliver these in any meaningful way in the current facility. In addition, the 2012 PHN Architects ADA Compliance Audit and the 2018 HGA feasibility study identified critical life and safety building issues to address. In particular, water penetration in the roofs, dome, brick, and foundation, lack of ADA compliant interest entrances, elevator, restrooms, and building flow, poor interior lighting, aging HVAC, and parking. Over the last few years, a few years, the library has, among other things, repurposed staff and backroom operation areas into public spaces, reduced office spaces, and installed compact shelving, all to find space for these new services desired by the community. By doing so, the library is able to create a small teen space and relocate materials to the ground floor for ease of access by seniors. There are no more options to find space within the existing facility. Hummel Consulting in preparing the library's 2020 space needs assessment determined the square footage required to deliver each individual, individual aspect of current and desired library services. When tallied, required square footage exceeds what is available in the current building. The planned expansion delivers on the objectives listed here. In short, the project is not simply a building to, project to build, but a project to deliver on objectives. What the expansion does not do is duplicate the spaces and functionality provided by other civic organizations in the community. For example, there is no plan to build a state-of-art, state-of-art auditorium and performance stage, elegant event spaces with catering kitchens, a recording studio, or historic archives. Great libraries build community, and that has been our north star over the last years. The library is a vital part of the entire Lake Forest community. The capital improvement project ensures that the library continues to be a sustaining and dynamic element in the Lake Forest community. We partner with other civic assets and the business community with one simple goal, that we all work together to inspire all our organizations to grow and transform to deliver world-class resources, services, places, and events to the Lake Forest community. Thank you for your time and interest this evening. At the end of tonight's presentation, we'll discuss next steps and, and respond to any questions. And now I will turn it over to Victor Pichati of HGA.
Thank you, Katherine. And I believe you may need to stop sharing the presentation so I can open up the next one.
You are absolutely correct. There you go.
Thank you. First of all, good evening. It's a pleasure to meet all of you, a privilege to be presenting to you tonight. Only regret for our team is that it cannot be in person. So perhaps a few months from now, perhaps longer, but thank you for having us as part of this discussion. Hey, is everybody able to see the screen? Great. Thank you. So consistent with the moniker that Katherine shared, honoring the legacy and embracing the future would be a guidepost for the development of any architecture to come. As Katherine mentioned, we have done a lot of study. However, there isn't anything designed with specificity. Library architecture is much more so about meeting and serving the program needs of the library that in turn serves the community more so than starting out with bricks and mortar. So we have tonight to share with you some concept sketches, not necessarily illustrative of a finished architecture, but illustrative of how architecture can serve the needs of the programming specific to the Lake Forest library. What you're seeing, of course, is the view up the main path towards the door at present. And a good symbol and starting point in talking about honoring the legacy is the plan to restore, to restore the historic walk and grand steps up to the main library entrance as Edwin Clark designed them in 1931. Our team has done an exhaustive historical analysis of the building and catalogued each and every part that would need some restorative work to restore the building to its original grandeur. We've also created several planning diagrams. You can see these aren't floor plans just yet with walls and doors, but what the colors do illustrate is planning that provides space programming for each and every patron and demographic in the community. You will see here spaces that serve adults of all ages, teens, children, spaces ranging from quiet formal reading to spaces for teens that are not so quiet and all in between. We'll be sharing with you some sketches of restoration of the historic building. I'll draw your attention with the cursor to the historic foyer that Katherine was just referencing that could be restored both literally and symbolically to a community living room for Lake Forest, as well as one of the historic reading rooms restored to its original condition. So these images are some benchmarks of what contemporary libraries are offering in terms of informal gathering and reading areas. And while they are daylit and inviting, they're nothing like the asset that you all have there in Lake Forest. It's just not very often we have the privilege to call a space like this a library environment. The image that you see here suggests that this has now become restored and converted to a community living room where folks can gather, meet friends and colleagues in preparation for library programmings, programming, or just sit quietly to read. This is an example of contemporary reading areas in libraries. Open and flexible, but not quite as special as what you all have a chance to inhabit at the Lake Forest library. There are some refinishing and remedial acts needed to restore this space to its original grandeur. New period-specific furnishings will actually offer the library more flexibility in this space than is available now. And this would be thought of as an adult-oriented, quiet reading area, welcoming, and vibrant in the, in a restored library. Space programming is proposed for all ages. Specifically, in this case, teens. These are some benchmarking images of contemporary teen environments where they can avail themselves of multiple media. Sometimes it's gaming, but in Lake Forest, the teens do go to the library to study and to join tutoring groups and share community in that way. This is an image of what the character of an expansion to the historic building might look like. What a new expansion would allow is an open, inviting, and easily accessible entrance for all. That is a concern at the library now, of providing what would be a secondary entrance, but accessible to folks with disabilities, convenient for parents with strollers, access to vertical circulation and elevating to make access to all programs in the library, both functionally accessible and welcoming as well. In the green color to the left side of the image is showing a option for a teen environment close to the main entrance, transparent, welcoming, and also visible to staff and patrons alike. The library has a lower level, and it's important to the library project to restore and revitalize the space available on the lower, as lower level as well. We have been studying means to bring daylight into a central location in the lower level so that space can be used and also enhanced in its quality through the use of daylight. The colors that you see in this diagram show multiple uses in the lower level, including, again, adult programming, specialty collections such as business, dedicated children's program room, a creative and media lab, as well as a shared amenity room for things like author lectures, tutoring, et cetera. These are images of what some of these spaces look like in contemporary libraries. In the upper right, you see a series of quiet and enclosed reading and study rooms, which are definitely needed to serve library program in Lake Forest. There's a teen area where they can record, they can create, they can create art on 3D printers, learn sewing, number of flexible activities in these creative lab environments. These images show flexible amenity room environment. This is similar to what is the Kacian Room in the library now. However, it's proposed that that room is remodeled into more centrally located staff environments. So a new space that can certainly be utilized for a number of tutoring stations, for author lectures, and other events that have been occurring in the Kacian Room would be provided in an expanded library. This is a concept sketch for what a lower-level environment might feel like. You can see in the center of the image would be a central stair that would open onto an atrium and welcome daylight all the way down into the lower-level environments. The room to the left with the green wall here is represented as a book club room, tablet armchairs, places to write, also could be used for quiet study and tutoring. And in the blue to the right, the create and multimedia lab. These are meant and intended to be flexible, so for some time they might be programmed with 3D printing or laser cutting. At other times sewing machine and at other times graphic design and media equipment. And in the foreground, you see more flexible, open workplace for patrons to be able to just sit and work on a laptop or find their reading materials and read. A proposed expansion would include a smaller footprint upper level. One central component that you're seeing here is shifting children's environments from a lower level to an upper level where they can benefit from ample daylight and view and openness. Also, children's environments really warrant a special care and design of environments that speak to and are important to those younger age groups. This is a sketch of what a children's environment might feel like and the amenities that it might bring. In this particular case, in the center, one arrives at the top of a stair, but directly off the image to the left would be an elevator that can welcome parents with children in strollers to directly access to new children's area. From the center stair, there would be a vantage point of the historic building and the dome as a focal point and a symbolic heart of the library. What you're seeing in the children's area are children-appropriate book bins, browser bins, interactive learning tools and children-oriented furniture. That was a very quick tour through some concept sketches, again, just meant to show how architecture can support library programming and some of the concepts that may be explored in your project. So, thank you. And I will turn it over to Russ Hodge.
Thank you. And Barat, if you would bring up the first slide, please. Apparently, we are having some technical difficulties. Here we are. Thank you, Barat. Can everybody hear me and see the slide, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Well, thank you so much, the opportunity to brief council this evening. I joined with my colleagues and I wish that my team could be there personally. We have spent significant time in your community and truly have enjoyed our time with you and continue to do so. My intention here this evening is to give you an update around specifically philanthropy and the strong tradition of philanthropy in your community and what our research uncovered relative to the library. First slide, please, Barat. We work in the community during two periods, the fall-winter of 2019 and the fall-winter of 2020. And our research really unveiled and found significant interest and passion for your library. We as a firm, the Hodge Group, have worked with well over 30 libraries, approaching well over, actually 70 million at this point, dollar-sized projects. So this is a comfortable space for us. Our charge is to look at philanthropic potential principally. Next slide, please. We have worked in really storied communities such as yours, such as Naples, Santa Fe, Oakwood, and feel very comfortable understanding of what is a rich philanthropic history. Our work started looking at 74 community leaders. Through the process, we interacted face-to-face or roundtable with 40 leaders. This, along with other forms of research, created the backbone of our work. Next slide, please. As I'm sure many of you know, feasibility study is a well-established methodology to test a specific project. In this case, we were testing the viability of the Lake Forest Library project. Our test, we have to have a number to start with, was tested at 26 million. Why 26 million? We took the first round of work by HGA. We took our examination of community capacity and similar projects. So those three factors led us to the number which we tested. I will pause here and say that this is our third project we've been privileged to do with the architectural firm of HGA. So we have these discussions in the community and these discussions are mathematically plotted against what's called a chart of standards, which is the next slide. What we're looking for in this slide is the availability, if we were to do 10 million example only, what gifts you would need. In philanthropy, a very small number of gifts, maybe 30 to 50, make up the majority of any major campaign, whether it's 100 million or 50 million. This is the example of a $10 million chart of standards. And when we run the numbers, we have to be confident as we move forward, as you can see, for example, that we know that there are seven donors available of any source for $100,000. So we have to make sure we have proven philanthropic inventory. That's how we test it. Next page, please. We sit down with individuals and we present a case statement to them. It's a document that summarizes the initiative. We talked about it and it summarizes what the library wants to do. We go through a standardized panel of questions, 30, 45 minutes plus, and we record each and every response to those discussions. As you can see, if you talk to 40-plus people and you know an entire campaign is 40, you can really get a robust sample in this process. A couple of things came clear very early on. A tremendous pride in this iconic building, a philanthropic pride, a sense that it is unlike any other. I will say, we as specialists in the field of philanthropy were privileged to work on this project because we knew 80% plus of the building came from philanthropy and that makes it so, so special as a gift to your community. Next slide, please. They found the building to be an absolute icon. Many people we interviewed were surprised that there wasn't a foundation, so to speak, devoted to the building. We were asked, I think, nine times about the endowment. There is no endowment for the building. And finally, any thought that anyone would have of moving the library met with definite opposition. So love of location, love of the library. Next slide, please. We celebrate your rich tradition, almost like no other community we worked in, of public-private partnerships. These are just 10 of the public-private partnerships that were given to us. Russ, did you know that we did Forest Park Beach? Did you know that we did? Time and time, and these were all public-private initiatives. And it became very clear to us as we talked to people that people view that everybody has to come together, the stakeholders, the city government, the library and the community in the form of philanthropy. That's simply the way things get done in your community. And you can see by this list of 10 projects, things certainly do get together when all groups come together. Next slide, please. Really a strong response. Will you support this financially? 75% said yes, maybe 20%. Will you work? 70% said yes, 20% maybe. This is a very, very strong sample, remembering it's actually for a major campaign, a very deep sample. So we feel very good. Very often in these initiatives, we get a lot of supporters, but not a lot of workers. And the tradition of volunteerism in your community really came across in the survey. And later on in the presentation, I think you'll see that once more. Next slide, please. Our recommendations. We thought it was very important to recommend a comprehensive philanthropic solution. So first, we recommended the creation of a 501(c)(3) to be in the business of philanthropy. And then identifying and seeding that foundation with board members that were committed to the library's future, not just this initiative, but long-term. And then finally, we have comfort engaging in a $10 million philanthropic effort and bringing an endowment alongside that, very important. Endowment is something that people in your community and we agree with as being very important. So those were our core recommendations. Next slide, please. The donors and people interested in investing their time and treasure in this project viewed it very comprehensively. They did not want to just fix the dome or just fix the historical part of the project. They're mature philanthropists and they looked at it as a complete project. We as a firm, the foundation, will not only be seeking philanthropy from your community, but we will also be seeking investment organizations such as the National Endowment for the Arts and the Public Library Construction Act grant program. I will say there's a team member on the line that helped. We, two months ago, received $2.6 million from that fund for an Illinois library, which it may be interesting to note that HGA will be spending quickly. The next slide, please. This is remarkable in that I will say now that we seeded a five-member foundation board and we only ask five people to serve. In my 30 years in this business, it's very rare that you bat 100% in board recruitment. So we at the firm, more importantly, the library board and the library staff are honored to have this group of people seated in the 501(c)(3) as the leaders of the new foundation. So we're very excited, probably the first time that their names have gone into public record. But everybody we ask will agree to serve. The foundation board is committed to the long-term philanthropy of the library. They were selected based on probably over 80 community recommendations and we looked at them as an ability to really be impactful for the library's philanthropic future, both today and tomorrow for the 501(c)(3). Next slide, please. I stress that the library foundation board is separate, independent 501(c)(3) of the library board. Its mission is philanthropy. Its mission is to supply significant philanthropic resources for the advancement of the library. Underneath that, you'll see what their statement is, create long-term sustainable income through philanthropy. That's first. Near-term, they will support any effort. They have not approved it yet to preserve, restore and expand the library through philanthropy. So that's where they are right now. They had their first meeting just September 14th and they're organizing for their second meeting at this time. Next slide, please. I stated the first part of this earlier that we had 100% recruitment and it's so rare for me to have that that I bring it up twice. The foundation's activities will not be limited to the capital I just talked about. They will also be an endowment creation. They will also be good stewards and financial managers. So they have a broad spectrum of philanthropic responsibilities that any 501(c)(3) has that participates in such an important endeavor. Next slide, please. Really, in closing, it has been a remarkable series of discussion with your community. We stand firmly in the $10 million for this project from philanthropy because of the strength of the project, because of the strength of your community. And I am impressed, or I've never seen it before, that the word philanthropy is a cornerstone of your community. And we know that the philanthropic industry is so important, but to have it right there up front means a great deal. So I thank you for allowing us to this valuable work in such a philanthropic community. And with that, I'll have Catherine take the next slide.
Can everyone see the last slide, the next slide? Oh, thanks, Joe.
That, that's not it.
No. Joe, will you give me back the screen? All right, here we go. Sorry, it's just the next step slide. Wouldn't think it would be that hard to bring up. All right, okay. Well, I'm gonna just try one more time. Okay. I just gonna conclude with a little bit of what we anticipate will be the next steps and they're sort of stated here that we would get input from city council and then we would have a series of tasks to undertake all in working again with senior city staff to respond to city council, come back with timeline. We are now out in the public in a significant way, so we will want to start to talk about ways that we can engage the public as well as come back with detailed financial proposal to city council at some time when it is appropriate. The library foundation will continue its work to pursue private support and grant opportunities and then, as I said, we'll work closely with city staff to develop the best way to move this project forward. So we are open to taking any questions or comments this evening. I'm not sure how best to facilitate all of that, but I'm sure we will figure it out. So I'm gonna exit the screen sharing and.
Thank you very much. Very thoughtful, carefully put together presentation. Nice, nice job. And with that, I would open the floor up for questions from members of the council. Or comments.
I'll start. I have a couple of comments. As a lifelong resident of Lake Forest, I can speak that I've used the library in many, many different facets of life. And seeing now with my own children and heading down into the lower level. First and foremost, I think the preservation of the building that you spoke of in the presentation is so important to the character of our community. But trying to lug. But trying to lug children down those stairs is a challenge. And I think you talked a lot about some of the challenges, both for the ADA complacency as well as families with small kids. The opportunity there to improve on that, I think, is, is one to certainly focus on. The other thing I really noticed in the presentation is the, the opportunity of bringing more natural light. And in my line of work, we talk about flowers and plants and how they bring, bring people a sense of happiness. Looking at the situation we're all in right now with the pandemic. We're moving into the winter, we're moving into the dark. There's nothing worse than having people in the dark. So I enjoyed seeing that aspect brought forth as a way to quote unquote "modernize", but I'm not looking at it as pointing the phrase "modernize". I think it's just bringing the opportunity of people to be in, in that natural light and have it affect them in a positive way. So just a couple of quick comments.
Thank you.
Comments or questions?
I'm not sure what our role exactly is here as a council with regard to this project. Could somebody sort of elaborate on that a little bit?
I'll know involve a broad cross-section of the community. And our, our primary role, our first role, I guess, I should say, not necessarily primary, is to open up that conversation and get input from the broader community about the direction, about the programming, about basic sort of ground rules for this project going forward. So to my way of thinking, our job is to sort of moderate the conversation, be a channel for community input. Broader community input, you know, than, than has been gathered so far. Secondly, as was alluded to in my comments and also in the comments by the library representatives, we're going to have, the city's going to have a financial role to play here to the extent that the project has, you know, goes forward. And technically speaking, and I may misstate this at some level, but in spite of the fact that they are a separate, that the library has a separate line item on our tax bill, they don't have bond issue as authority. So major expenditures are, are very difficult for them to finance. So the most logical way to address that is for the city to provide that support if there's, if there's bonds financing required. So you know, those are just two sort of obvious, critical roles that the city will, will play here. And frankly, the financing aspect of it gives us a great deal of responsibility. And alternatively, it gives us a great deal of influence here. So that's, that's my quick response to your question.
But is it my, is it my understanding that will at some, at some point be presented with a completed design and a price tag for that after it evolves, I assume, from the library board, possibly in conjunction with this newly created foundation? I mean, we're not expected to get into the weeds and give our two cents on whether we like the design or any of that, I assume. Is that accurate?
Part of our city and it's part of the historic district and it's a major contributing structure to the historic district. So this, whatever is planned here will go through at a minimum historic preservation, probably building review, possibly plan commission, depending on parking and things like that. This is, this will go through the normal process that any other development goes through in the city of Lake Forest to get approved. Once all those boards and commissions have done their work and, and dived into those details, then it comes to the city council for approval or not approval. So, you know, that's, that's how the system works with everything and it's, the library is no different.
And yeah, so I'll just elaborate a little bit more to say that to your question, Alderman Rumel. Really think in a lot of ways, any financial approvals would probably be, you know, the final step in the process. The intent tonight was for the library board and staff to receive any feedback from the council on, you know, the, the potential scope and appearance of the project conceptually. After that, once they've come back with sort of a final plan, then, as the mayor alluded to, it would navigate the city's various approval processes. And I'd actually ask Community Development Director Kathy Zerniak, who I believe is on the call, to maybe walk the council through just very quickly at a high level what that would look like.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Importantly, what was presented tonight is, is really to help give you, give the council and the community an understanding of what a 21st century library could be. What, what role it would play in the community, how it would still certainly be a community gathering spot, but a building that will be flexible, allow the library to respond to different demands without overlapping the, the roles of other institutions. And in fact, I do know that the library works closely with Gorton, with the History Center, with Croy and with other entities. As the mayor said, as this project moves forward, with, with conceptual agreement around what this 21st century library should be in Lake Forest, where we often define our own institutions uniquely, we will go through the process of going to the Historic Preservation Commission. This building is in our historic district, it is designated as a contributing structure. So the restoration plans, as well as any plans to expand the building, will require review and ultimately a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission to the city council. There may be some variances needed, it may go to the zoning board. We don't know exactly what the complete project will be at this time. But this, at this point in the process, it's really an opportunity to make sure that the 21st century library, as envisioned as a result of the work of the library team, really is something that, that the council and importantly, the broader community really can coalesce around. Does that help to answer your question, Alderman Rumel?
Yes, to, to a degree, you know, I, I mean, so I'll venture into this realm, my understanding. So, you know, in my opinion, I think that whatever plan moves forward, I would hope that the planning group would look to environmentally sustainable practices, such as geothermal heating, things of that nature that will pay off in the long run in terms of efficiencies of operations. So whoever is involved with what the HVAC systems are, do we put solar panels on portions of this building? I would want to see that upfront and center in a project of this nature as we're moving forward because I think that is part of moving into the 21st century and I think that's what public buildings would demand. I would hope that they would look for making it a, you know, maybe a platinum building in terms of environmental sustainability along the lines of what we did with the new municipal services building. So that would be one form of input that I would, would like to offer. The sex, I have two other points that I would offer. The first point being that I would really favor, well, restoring the building to its former grandeur. And like Alderman Weber, I too remember this building from childhood. And I remember those see-through stairs with the lights under it that were sort of glass blocks. That may pre, that predates you even, Alderman Weber. But it is a beautiful building, so I would certainly support restoring it to its former grandeur. I would be very careful about rooms that duplicate services and rooms that we have in other buildings and facilities around the city. Additionally, I just personally have never been a fan of putting contemporary additions on old historic buildings. But that's, I mean, it's a personal preference, but I find it jarring when I see a beautiful building that has contemporary structures behind it or incorporated as part of it. And I think that some of the natural light that Alderman Weber talked about is to be encouraged. And I think that can be incorporated within a more traditional structure. So that's my two cents. I don't know if that's what you wanted, but that's what you got.
If I may, this is, I I'd like to first extend compliments to what I call the three Ps. The process, the people, and the presentation. The process has been great, reaching out to the community, getting the input that has. It's great that they have the people volunteering for the library board, now the library foundation. It's, it's, it's great that they offer their services and the excellence of the quality of the people. And the presentation, I thought was very good. One observation is enlisting the important attributes of the 21st century library. You mentioned collaboration with cultural and civic organizations. And certainly we have those within our community here. You talk about it needs to be a community partner, needs to complement the resources and services by other local agencies. And my question goes more to, you know, how do you do that? And I know it's beyond the presentation, but I would encourage everyone, including the library, when they're going through their process, is there something we should be doing to encourage that sort of collaboration among the different civic organizations that we have? And, and certainly it's something that, you know, we want to encourage. And if there's more to do in that area, I think that's something we should consider. But again, it's beyond the presentation. Going back to the proposal, there was the brief mention of, of parking and I'm sure the people are very well of the sensitivity to at times having some difficulty parking at the library. I'm assuming that's going to be an issue that's going to come forward further down the line or is it, has it been, or has it been addressed already? I wonder if you comment a little on the, how this new facility would accommodate the parking adequately.
This is Catherine. So one of the things that we have been talking about very seriously is about parking, addressing it in simple ways and in more complex ways. So the simple thing is reversing the traffic pattern. It, it takes, gives you a whole different line of sight for when small, small persons are running in, in and out of parked cars. There will probably never be enough parking on the library site. But what, what will happen or what we're, we are increasing the number of spots. And more importantly, what we're doing is thinking about how those spots can be made into true ADA compliant and accessible spots. So right now, we, our access to our door from our two handicap spots is again a very long traverse. But into thinking about an expansion and, and a new entrance possibility, it's really, one of the really, really important things we're doing is looking at queuing up parking that makes it easy for everyone to get into the building. And there, you know, there's always potential. We've been talking for a long time about using the Deer Path Road parking lot. I mean, the last thing we want to do, you know, I'm very much aligned with Alderman Rumel on environmental issues and things like that. But we just don't want to put any more pavement down when we have pavement across the street. If we can make those situations more safe and, and for those of us that are able to make that short distance, I think, I think it's a little bit of an education process as well.
Right. And I recognize it's not a issue that maybe has an easy solution, but certainly would encourage it be part of your plans and how to accommodate the necessary parking arrangements. The other, the last thing I had was, is in the community survey that you highlighted, one of the services requested was increased west side presence. Is that part of your consideration now or is that something that is not being considered now?
That, that is a daily discussion in the building. It's not part of the capital improvement project in the sense of we, we thought about the potential of a new facility until we talked to people in the community and, and members in the community said absolutely not, the building must stay at 360 East Deer Path Road. But we continue to explore and ways that we can bring services even in a pop-up manner to the west side. And it's, it's, it's a critical part of what we talk about doing. And it got a little bit delayed by COVID, but we were picking up those conversations again as part of new strategic planning cycle.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you.
Fresh like, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I had a couple of comments, kind of dovetailing around your comments, Mr. Mayor, around our role. It seems like, as you stated, facilitating, you know, public engagement on project and also financing are our two primary roles. I think they're, they're kind of, they're connected to the extent to which, you know, it's a $26 million project and we're going to finance it with 16 million and 10 private, then I think it's highly correlated to some high levels of, of public engagement outside of just the traditional community development process with the HPC or any of the building reviewers. You know, there just seems to be an, an effort here, an opportunity, both from a fundraising and from a buy-in perspective, to engage the community on the vision of what this library could be for our community. And I'm, I'm curious on, on what the plans are to engage the public outside of our just normal traditional structures. Because personally, I think as the price tag goes up, I think that effort has to go up as well. And I would not be comfortable entering into an agreement for a community library for a large, large price tag if just a few of us are making the decision. And I think the entire community has to embrace it because they're going to be, you know, the primary, you know, both recipients of the beautifully restored structure in terms of the customers, but they're also going to be financing it through, through their taxes. So I, I'm really interested on that. And if you could shed some light on some of the plans you have for that type of engagement. And then if the price tag is pretty high, I'm just kind of curious. I would probably be an advocate for a referendum for the bond offering and that's obviously way down the road. But I, I think as the price tag gets four or five X on, you know, the Burrows, you know, kind of stormwater project, you know, we start thinking about, you know, if we do have to do a referendum, you know, considering the city spends around 12 million a year on, on CapEx. If it gets quite over that, you know, I think, I think there's going to be a need to engage the community on, on the, on the financing question. And it's going to be a lot easier to do that if they're engaged along the way on the design and the concept and how it's going to both restore and extend the capability that's, that's really embraced in our community.
Thank you. Any comments from Catherine or Russ on that subject?
Generically to that, that conversation, in the sense of we've had many conversations with a number of you who up on the screen tonight about the, the sort of the odd nature of this project. There's a chicken and egg, which part comes first? And so we do plan. I think Alderman Preschlik is exactly right. This needs to be introduced to the community in a, in a, in a much bigger way. How we do that around How we do that around COVID right now, I think, is challenging. But those are all conversations that we will be having. And this is sort of just the first step. The library board's been working on it a long time, and sometimes I think the staff and the board feel that, oh, my God, everybody must know about it because it's just consumed us for so long. And, but people don't always come to small board meetings, but they've been coming a lot lately. And we've been getting a lot of feedback and comments. And so figuring out a much more strategic plan, I think, will be working with Russ and his team about how to really talk about this for people to, whether it's, how we do it is still being developed. But there's no question that we understand the importance of doing it.
To answer the Alderman, we do have to have a unique method to welcome, embrace, and receive community input. More to come on that, but that is certainly part of our planning.
This is Alderman Karras. I have a couple of questions. I do agree with Alderman Preschleck on, on community engagement. So you don't need to respond, but I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering, I'm, I'm sure you've mentioned that you've done many large-scale projects, you know, in the, the tens of millions of dollars. So I'm sure there must have been some community engagement for those communities. So maybe at some point you could tell us a little bit about that. I'm also wondering with this new foundation in place, if you have any anticipated timeframe for the commitment of philanthropy. You know, typically the length of time it takes to secure those, those types of funds.
We do have an established methodology to involve the community in dialogue. That also runs parallel with the architects, HGA. They're a very important driver in that discussion. They very often facilitate messaging along with us and the form of charrettes. There's many methodologies. Not specific to this foundation, because I have not given them a timeline yet, but the average cycle for a major campaign of this will go in one year to 14 months is what we see for this type of cycle. Obviously, the more significant gifts are early in the cycle, but I think 12 months is the normal cycle we see. COVID really hasn't changed that too much thus far.
Alderman Karras, this is Victor Pichotti, the architect. I can also share a little bit about how our team facilitates community engagement. The first thing I'll mention is no two communities are alike. And so we have a toolbox of different things that we can leverage depending on what you all think will serve your community best. Some of those tools include multiple types of surveys from informal online or through consultants, fully statistically valid surveys. We have been deploying more and more social media and web-based interactivity where citizens, residents can go to their smartphone anytime and share comments, click on a map or a design. And then the in-person community engagement is still very important. Some of that is generational. We find some of the seniors prefer to come to a community center, facility, and share their thoughts and feelings and fill out a comment card, you know, like we've done for many, many years. So many tools available. So the first step of community engagement would be customizing the toolkit and the process to your community. But that's a summary of some of the tools and techniques that we use.
I, I'd just like to add that from my experience with Gorton, which is now almost 10 years ago, exactly 10 years ago, people voted with their wallets. Period end of discussion. I mean, the ultimate community and engagement was having people across the community contribute financially and also express their opinions in the process, and they certainly did. So I think that's, that's maybe a a little, a little more straightforward way than perhaps like a referendum that has, you know, long lead time and lots of complications associated with it. In any event.
Hey, George, can I, can I wrap this up? Because I think they've all done a really great job. And thank you, Russ. Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Wendy, for a great presentation. Want to caution my colleagues. You guys are really starting to get down into the weeds. And, you know, we're going to be going through this for a while. So I think it's, it's great input and everybody has great ideas, but let's, 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 let's trust the process. I really enjoyed Alderman Preschleck's comments as far as that go. You know, my opinion to the people that presented, I don't have an opinion. I want information. Okay? I'm not going to tell you about bricks and mortar because quite honestly, you guys know more about it than I do. Alderman Rummel's we do it in an environmentally friendly way, but I wouldn't pretend to have that knowledge. But what I don't want to hear is the word original grandeur anymore. I think we've probably had enough of it for the entire presentation. But, you know, my observation is I still want to know what a 21st century library is supposed to look like. You're going in the right direction. But maybe if you could coax us along more, I think a large part of it is the money, but let's figure out where we need to go together. And quite possibly, you know, you can start giving us some more information on that. I think the heart, the heart of the community is behind this, but let's get a, let's start focusing in on things other than raising money. It's an important process, but what is a library supposed to look like 30 years from now? I really want to know. I, I hope my colleagues are going to take my comments about getting into the weeds seriously because I, I don't think, quite honestly, anybody else are doing the process any good. Let's let them do what they're supposed to do. And let's let it work its way through the boards and commissions. And that's all I have to say, George.
Thank you. Alderman Notes, I think I saw your hand in the air.
Nothing that really has been covered and not to belabor points. Everything's been addressed.
Can I just ask, at what point do we look at some financial projections and start to plug this into a budget process? I mean, maybe before we get too far down the road on this, we should see what a bond issue of this magnitude would look like plugged into our financial projections for the years going forward. And just see what that looks like in, in, in light of anticipating other public works projects that we see coming down the line and, you know, various other challenges that the city's going to be facing. I mean, really, before we, and this is a big ask. And I think we should take some sort of a financial look at starting to plug this into our budget projections going forward so we can see what it would look like to see, you know, just how it fits into our future budget plan.
I have a comment. Now, it's a complicated question because it's not just the debt. It's a debt service that we would have to encounter in our budget and how that flows back to the library's operating budget and the operating budget going forward in a much expanded footprint of any library with additional staff. And how does that affect the tax rates for both us and the library? So it's a, it's a very complicated question beyond just how much is the capital budget. Do I just throw that out there for?
Great, Alderman Morris. And I think that we have to plug all of that into our considerations because as has been pointed out, ultimately, it's the taxpayers who will be paying the bill for this. And I think we do need to take all of that into consideration when we, and we need to roll that out to the public so they have a true understanding of the cost of this.
Well, let me point out that we don't know what the ask it is.
Thank you.
So that's the starting point. And, and from there, absolutely, everything you're talking about will happen as it happens in every significant capital commitment that we make. And I, I wouldn't imagine that this would be any different. If anything, it's likely to be more carefully thought through. This is an opening conversation. This is the beginning of getting that community input, the broader community input. That's the purpose of this presentation, and this is the beginning of a process that's going to evolve significantly over the next months and hopefully not too many years. So, but you're absolutely right. All that needs to be considered and you know, it will be.
Yeah, and I'll just add maybe for a little additional context, certainly not to speak, you know, for the library or their team, but based on some conversations we have had. You know, it would be my expectation that based on the, the feedback that the library receives from the council tonight, based on feedback they'll continue to receive from the community, that really the next step will be, again, to continue to refine and develop a proposal for the project. At the same time as they, you know, undertake the process of firming up a potential philanthropic support, you know, within the community, which is critical to then understanding what the potential public financial commitment would be. But, so that will come in time, as the mayor alluded to, but I will say there's no question, the expectation from the city's perspective is that, that, that's a conversation that will occur within the context of the community's broader capital needs. And certainly, when we get to that point in time, you know, city staff working with library staff would be prepared to provide pretty detailed financial projections for the council, again, both in the context of this specific project, but also within the broader context of our capital needs over the next five years, 10 years, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank, thanks, everyone, for all the work that's been done to date, all the efforts that have been made to put this presentation together and introduce this very important initiative to the community at, at large. I would say stay tuned and to be continued. There's, there's much to do. With that, I conclude my mayor comments and turn the agenda over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I have no report or comments tonight, which probably suits everyone just fine. So I'll be happy to turn it back over to you.
Clever. Okay. Now, the next item on our agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Members of the public can provide public comment by calling into the following number during the meeting. We'll wait here for a moment, and then Amber will tell us if we have anybody from the public that would like to comment on anything.
We do have a caller this evening. Please give me one second and I will put them on. Please go ahead.
Good evening. This is Richard Sugar. I have a quick comment for Hodges. And my question is, given the enthusiastic embrace by the community of the library project and the dramatic philanthropic embrace of the project, why, if the project's estimated cost is $26 million, why Hodges suggested only $10 million be raised philanthropically, which is even less than half of the total project? I would think that the goal should be significantly higher unless you believe that, starting out conservatively, allows for an additional increase in the goal as the, as the, as the effort moves forward. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point well taken.
There are no other callers at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is committee report from the finance committee acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year 2020 treasures report. Elizabeth Hollob will provide some background.
Thank you, Mayor. This item requests city council simply acknowledge receipt of the fiscal year 20 treasures report. The document was included in your packet as well as your finance committee packet. This is a requirement of Illinois state statute. Within six months of the year end, we must prepare, publish, and file the treasures report with both the city clerk and the county clerk. Candidly, the format is less than desirable. The reason why it's presented in the format is because to reduce publication costs in the newspaper. This is a format that most municipalities across the state have adopted. And so the last several years, we've provided better historical vendor information on our website. And then, of course, as you know, effective May 1 of 2019, we have now an online check register. So we upload weekly the check vendor dispersment payments on the website viewable by the public. The, I would also note that as far as year end fiscal year 20 financials on your November 2 agenda, you'll receive a report from Ben Sparrow, the Audit Committee Chair. The Audit Committee met last Thursday to review the fiscal year 20 comprehensive annual financial report and receive a presentation from the city's independent auditor. So that summary will be provided to you on November 2. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Questions about the treasures report? It is an infernal piece of communication to read. I assure you, if anybody took the time, you'd get a magnifying glass and it's. There being none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Some moment. Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karras.
Hi.
Alderman Rummel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschleck. Alderman Gachkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman. I see, right? Alderman Weber. Eight yays, zero nay. Motion carries.
Much. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. I'll read the five omnibus items tonight. First is approval of the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. Second is approval of the October 5, 2020, city council meeting minutes. Third is approval of resolutions committing local funds for the 2020 Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program for the City of Lake Forest Project Grant Applications and the authorization of the city manager to execute related grant application documents. Fourth is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning board of appeals. First reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And fifth is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, also first reading, and if desired are there any items that any member of the council would like removed or considered separately?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some questions regarding item number three on the agenda. First question is
First question is, to understand the process, we're being asked to approve a resolution in which we're committing to a certain amount of funding for three different capital improvement projects. Is this action in lieu of any capital improvement project review? Or, you know, how does this process work in terms of, you know, if we're approving the funding, are we approving the project to go forward?
Sure, unless. Sorry, sorry, mayor.
Quick answer is no, but I'll let city manager Wisha explain in more detail.
And actually, I'll turn it over to finance director Elizabeth Hollab to answer that question.
Alderman Bushman, these projects will be presented on November 9th for the finance committee review as part of the budget workshop. Unfortunately, the grant application date predates the November 9th budget workshop. And so this action is requested this evening to allow them to get the grant application submitted before the deadline.
Okay, and let me ask you a follow-up question. In the resolution, we talk about committing a certain amount of dollars to each of the three projects. Then we use the term plus any additional amounts as may be required for the city's share of the project cost. Is there some comfort we can take that we're not giving a blank check here?
So, great minds think alike, Alderman Bushman. I asked that very question of the public works department, and we did, staff did have a conversation about that. So our understanding is that there is capacity if a, a project is bid out and comes back significantly greater than the estimate, the city would have the opportunity to not proceed with the project. They just want to be reasonably comfortable that if the grant is awarded, the city will proceed with the project.
Thank you.
Something that's actually a benefit for Lake Forest in that we have the resources to do the design work so that when we go for the grants, the project is quote unquote shovel ready, which many communities do not have the ability to do. And as a result, you know, we stand in a better position to actually receive the grants. And that actually was the case with the Baroque grant. One of the reasons why we were so near the top of the heap was because the grant, the, the, the project was designed and ready to go. And so it's important to have a certain level of design work done before you submit for the grant. Otherwise, you don't qualify for the grant. Other questions? Alderman Lively? Weber? Sorry.
Can't hear.
Did I freeze?
I'm muted, Ray.
I think we're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I, everybody just froze. My connection is cutting in and out, so. Can you hear me now? Am I back?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I was actually speaking to Alderman Weber, sorry. Difficulties resume.
We're out of touch, Elaine.
We can see you talking, but we can't hear you.
I will just note to, to finance director Hollab's point, you will see these projects on November 9th, and they are listed as grant dependent. And so, you know, that's where I would just note that in looking at any of the individual projects, it wouldn't necessarily be listed in your projects included. Those scored as a one, but certainly, as we've discussed in past capital workshops, staff is attempting to be more aggressive in seeking out these grant funding opportunities. And when you have a chance to secure 80% of the funding in order to move it forward, then obviously that, you know, will change some of the prioritization. But that's where you'll see it on November 9.
Would it be helpful if Alderman Weber logged out of Zoom and logged back in so that we could get her back into our conversation? Give it a try, maybe, I, I mean, I don't know.
Give her a moment to see if she can rejoin before we go to our vote.
Am I back?
You're back.
Okay, sorry for that. My, my question was regards to the two omnibus items regarding, there was a first reading option or a grant final approval? Do we need to separate those? If we want a grant final approval, just, it was a procedural question.
No, we can hear you. It, it goes to, unless somebody pulls it, it will be final, first and final reading, if it's approved on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there are no more comments or questions. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karras.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is new business. We have one item of new business. It is consideration of a recommendation from the plan commission to deny the request for an amendment to the Gimbel plat of subdivision. This will either, we can either follow this by a motion or provide direction to the staff. We will either accept the plan commission's recommendation or provide guidance to the staff for further consideration. Kathy Serniak will present the background and issue at hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If I could have a head nod, if you can see my screen. Thank you. This is a recommendation that comes to the city council from the plan commission. It is a recommendation to deny a petition by a six to zero vote. Because the plan commission is a recommending body to the city council, even though this is a recommendation to deny, it still requires city council action. In your packet, beginning on page 68, you have a fair amount of background information on this. So I will give you a quick review, and then I would be happy to answer any questions. This petition concerns a property addresses 211 West Westminster, located on the north, on the south side of Westminster, west of Green Bay Road. It's this parcel outlined in red. The request is to amend, to, to remove a covenant that is on the recorded plat. The recorded covenant that is requested to be removed is here on the screen. And in the plan commission's opinion, it, it was pretty clear, particularly the last sentence, there shall be no additional curb cut to lot one onto Westminster. When plats are recorded, it is not unusual for plats approved by the city to have covenants, restrictions and limitations. And that's particularly true for planned preservation subdivisions. Subdivisions that are in the overlay district, the planned preservation overlay district, require the plan commission and the city council to, as determined to be appropriate, place particular restrictions on those plats to preserve historic and natural resources. The plat, as I mentioned, was recorded in 1997. The, the two lot subdivision created a parcel on the south side of approximately two and a half acres and a parcel on the north, fronting on Westminster, that is about one and third acre. The southern parcel had a house on it at the time of subdivision. The Gimbel subdivided the property. It, it was a very long and contentious process. In fact, the public discussion of the subdivision spanned several years. The Gimbel's did not sell or develop lot one, which they had created prior to their sale of the property. The Donovan's then bought the property, bought both lots and did not proceed with selling off that lot one or developing it. The Donovan's now have the properties on the market and have requested removal of this covenant. An air photo, just to give you a sense of, of the character of the area. The reason the Gimbel subdivision was so controversial is because it's immediately adjacent to, and actually used to be part of the Noble Judah Estate, which extended all the way to the west. You, you see, much of this estate is still intact, many structures. The current owner purchased the property a number of years ago and has invested considerable money into restoring and, and preserving the site. The, the overall character of the streetscape is fairly wooded. The, the limitation for the curb cut onto Westminster and the requirement that access for both lots come through a single curb cut, much discussion was made of preserving the streetscape, both the natural character of it and the historic character. The plan commission, as I mentioned, after hearing a presentation from the attorney for the petitioner and after receiving both written and verbal testimony, did vote, identified six findings. They are more fully detailed in the write-up on your agenda. But the plan commission found that in the 90s and prior to the recording of the plat in 1997, there was a, a full, fair and thorough public process, that the intention of the restrictions to preserve the streetscape, to preserve the natural and historic character have not changed. There have been no material change in circumstances, that the restrictions have always been publicly available on the plat since it was recorded in 1997. And, and importantly, even after approval of a subdivision, the city does not proactively record a plat. We wait for the petitioner to submit a final plat to us with the owner's signatures, which then authorize us to record a plat. The plan commission heard from several neighbors that, in fact, they relied on those prior approvals and making decisions about whether to purchase property or whether, whether and how to invest in their property. The plan commission also recognized that lot one is buildable today, as it was in 97, in 1997, when the plat was recorded. The options before the, the city council tonight. First, you can approve a motion accepting the plan commission's recommendation to deny the petition. Or if the council desires to move in a different direction with this petition, then we suggest that you direct both the petitioner and staff to prepare final documents. The petitioner would need to prepare an amended plat. Normally, we would require an amended plat to be prepared before we go to the plan commission. We did not want the petitioner to go to that additional time and expense, so we moved this forward without the final plat. But if you choose to move in the direction of approving this, staff would also work with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance which would approve this request to remove the covenant from the plat as it currently is reflected on the recorded plat. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kathy? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, before we get to that, I've been having difficulty hearing you all night. I don't know about anybody else. When you bring that mic up to your mouth a little bit more.
Better?
Yeah, that's much better, thank you.
Sorry. Questions or comments? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the plan commission's recommendation.
No move. Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Cooperative mouse, Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karras.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is additional items for discussion or comments by city council members. Any member of the council that would like to raise any issues at the moment? General comments? Okay, there being none. I would just head us toward the adjournment by saying to the public, specifically and importantly, the subject that we brought up tonight with the library is going to be a topic of much discussion and conversation over the next several months, many months probably. And I would encourage everybody to stay informed. And again, remind everybody of the looming issues we're dealing with, with COVID as we go into the winter, and please be on your best behavior. Having said that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, y'all.
Thank you.